Okay, if we can just rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we can remain standing and just remember all the folks around the world fighting and different wars and battles. And also locally, we lost a very wonderful community member, longtime resident, Mrs. Magnus. Thank you. The mayor is absent today. Welcome, everybody, to June 3, 2024, regular meeting of the Village of Highland Falls Board. Is there any public comment on the agenda items? Nothing at all?
Well, yeah, I have a question. Ron Hall, Harry Hatten. Bills and claims, one million, I mean, can we get some, like, breakout of the biggest expenditures?
Yeah, the two biggest ones, and I was gonna bring it up when we got there. The two biggest ones is eight hundred forty-two thousand, forty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. That's for the water project in Andora. And the next biggest one was a fifty-eight thousand, one eighty-eight, sixty-three, and that was for the sewer digester, sewer digesters. But we can, I can bring that up again, the bills. Anybody else's agenda items?
It's a small agenda.
Yeah, it's a pretty short agenda. Okay, hearing none, the first thing on the agenda is to approve of bills and claims for fiscal year 23, 24 in the amount of one million, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty cents. And as I mentioned, the two most notable bills out of these is the capital project of eight hundred forty-two thousand, forty-six dollars and thirty-five cents with the water project, and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents for the sewer digesters. I think trustee Ramis and I know myself went through the bills and claims, they appeared all to be in order. I just need a motion.
Motion to approve the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Okay, the next. If you'd like, you can go for one. So we'll do a roll call, I'll do the roll call. Trustee Guerrero?
No.
Trustee Ramis?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
And trustee DeSala, yes. So, motion passes. The first thing on the agenda is resolution, the second thing, I'm sorry, is resolution to transferring our reserve funds. So whereas the Village of Highland Falls wishes to extend prudent to set aside from budget lines not fully used certain sums to provide for future stability of operations, protecting taxpayers from unforeseen needs, and whereas the Village, by demonstrating its financial health, will benefit from borrowing at more attractive interest rates. Now for their being resolved that the Village of Highland Falls outlays from its 2023, 24 budget to provide for reserve funds. Transfer of the following allocations in budget: Village wall repair, reserve repair, excuse me, three thousand, six twenty-five; fire department truck reserve engine, sixty thousand; fire department truck reserve command vehicle, five thousand; DPW vehicle reserve, seventy-five thousand; and police vehicle reserve, five thousand. For total, to move out of general into our reserve accounts of one hundred forty-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-five. Transferring fund category A through E above to line A zero 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 point zero nine six two. All transfers to be deposited in accordance with the Village investment policy into a reserve account hereby established. The trustee, those are older, so that's not tonight, obviously. I need a motion to make those transfer of reserve funds.
So I have a question about that, that's, you said it's a 2023, 2024?
Yes.
We're already in 2024, 2025.
Yes, okay.
So that transfer is in the past?
Yeah, we're still, we're still technically dealing with anything from paying bills from 23, 24 to any type of budgetary transfers, we're within, we're within the timeframe.
Because it's May, it's June, it's June 30.
You're right, it is June 30.
Yeah, so we're transferring June, and the end of the fiscal year is May, so it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a 23, 24 transfer.
That's exactly what it is, though, because we're, these are the reserve fund transfers that we have in the budget for 23, 24. And at the end of this year, this fiscal year, 24, 25, we'll probably do the same thing. Just by next.
So in the budget, second, in the budget, remember how we have the reserve funds?
Yeah.
So they're sitting there?
Yeah.
All the way up until this point in time?
Of course, the reserve funds are there until you take it out of the reserve funds. I'm just wondering why we're doing it as a 2023, 2024 transfer instead of a 2024, 2025 transfer, since we're in the 2024, 2025 fiscal year. Okay, so that's it, I know what reserve funds are. What I'm saying is that why would this transfer be happening backdated instead of in the fiscal year that we currently?
It's not, we're not backdating anything, let's, let's just stay.
So we're just like, should we have done it at the last meeting?
If you wanna make a 2023, 2024 transfer, it should have been made before the fiscal year ended. That's how we do the accounting.
Again, this is legal, again, we are, it's legal, we are okay, we are within the timeframe. I don't think we need to turn this into anything more than what it is. We typically transfer the reserve fund monies from especially general account, especially this year with all that we've had going on. We typically wait for the last meeting. Not everybody was at the last meeting, so we thought it prudent to do it when everybody was gonna be there. Obviously, not everybody's at this meeting, but we do need to get this, this general housekeeping to move those funds into reserve accounts so that we can have reserve, bolster, a bigger reserve.
Okay, all right, we're putting money from the general fund to reserve funds.
Correct. So I just need a motion.
Motion.
I'll, I'll do roll call again, trustee Guerrero?
Yes.
Trustee Ramis?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee DeSala, yes, I'm one absent. Next on the agenda is to approve, approve the Highland Falls Fourth of July firecracker 5K race on Memorial, Memorial Park at 6:30 AM to 10:00 AM. It is a routine event every year. Oh, here, it's, there's actually two pages, the next page is for the insurance. It's actually the next, it's a total of three pages.
Motion.
Okay, motion by trustee. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is to approve L and L property maintenance bid of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars for grass cutting services for the village. It was the lowest bid that came into the bid proposals. I need a motion and a second and a vote to approve that.
Motion.
Motion by Carol. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Ramis. Discussion?
Opposed.
Okay, we, wanna do roll call?
Sure.
So do a roll call, trustee Guerrero?
No, because I think we should be doing grass cutting ourselves.
Trustee Ramis?
Yea.
Trustee Carroll? Trustee DeSala, yes. Okay. And the last thing on the agenda is to resolution to approve Accure Property and Liability Annual Review Renewal Policies. That was the renewal for the village's insurance, and we need to approve that as well.
Why, it could have been Travelers or Insurance Company, isn't it, Travelers, is this a new insurance company?
Accure Property and Liability, I believe, is the company that, is the broker company that puts together the proposal and the insurance for us at Rockland.
So no change?
Uh, no change, other than what we voted on two meetings ago, which was the workman's comp. We got a better price on workman's comp. I just need a motion for this and a second.
Motion.
Second by trustee Carroll. Roll call. Trustee Guerrero?
Yes.
Trustee Ramis?
Yea.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee DeSala, four. Okay, I have a public comment. Yes, sir.
Michael Joyce, proud member of Village of Highland Falls. So, the real estate tax went up by five percent, am I right? And then we had another tax on the water bill, which was...
Nothing on this.
The base rate went up by thirty-nine and a half percent.
Thirty-nine and a half percent, so.
No, no, that doesn't take effect over next, next year.
Yeah, but it's, it's gonna be.
No, I just, I, I don't.
Okay, no, no, I don't, totally understand, totally understand. So the real estate tax went up this year, and a water hike or a water assessment also is on the cards for this year. So we had two taxes this year that hard-working people are gonna pay for. People, like I said, then, are making choices between food, medicine, and having a roof over your head. Am I right in saying that with the real estate tax, if you're paying twelve thousand a year or thirty-two, that you have to put a thousand away a month, and I'm a layman, just to cover the roof over your head? Am I off the mark?
No, you're right.
Can anybody disagree? So... And, and, this is directed at the whole board, but you were pushing to raise the ceiling, you know? And you said, "It's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen." Well, well, here we are, here we are. You, you basically lied to these people. You lied to the people you went to school with. You lied to the people you grew up with. You lied to the old people. And just because they hand down free parking passes, which doesn't cost them anything, these old people are gonna be paying taxes through the nose. Now, the real estate tax went up this year. Again, I'm late, I'm a late, a late person, so it's not gonna cover the overhead that, that we've incurred. So taxes are gonna go up next year as well, and to say, "Oh, we got our best, we kept it at five percent." Oh, yeah, you kept it at five percent for this year, what's gonna happen next year? When the interest rates come, and you have obligations that we have to pay because of bad management from our trustees that handle eight million of our money, taxpayer money. All, all I'm saying is, your actions define your life. And your actions up to now, when it comes to looking after the two weakest groups in any society, which is the young and the old, because school taxes have gone up again as well.
I'll let you go an extra twenty seconds. Thank you.
Thank you for listening, and you know what? I appreciate you not shuffling papers and doing things like the mayor does when I get up to hotel conference.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Sure.
When Joe was charged, went to court, he had to admit what he had done, and he got a slap on the wrist. So, of course, as Jimmy knows, I like the truth, so I did the research. The research showed me that there are two options, vote him out or get the governor to remove him. So I'm wondering what I missed in my research, Jimmy, that would lead you to ask Laney to come back if Joe leaves. What did I miss in my research? Nothing?
Public comment. Was that, I'm sorry, have you, have you done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so this meeting is held, I forget, was it the first Monday and third Monday of every month?
First Monday.
So why is it that for the past, actually last meeting, everybody was here, so that was good? But before that, up until, got all the way up until trustee Phillips, though, there hasn't been a full panel of trustees. I was just wondering why that is, it's sent for every first and third Monday, every, every week, why is there always somebody missing? If you could enlighten, that would be very good. But it's public comment, so that's my comment.
Pablo Pulido. On or, on or about March 26, I gave you each of you guys a letter asking about the lawyer, the comments that she made to me, and I felt threatened about it. I still didn't get any answers. While, in one of the meetings, Mr. Donocro said that the DA had it on control, but what the DA, or what they were looking for was it for the DA to accuse me, not accuse her. So the DA practically left on their faces, and this is from somebody's mouth, but nothing been done, nothing is done. It's just, so pretty much this lady over here can talk to whoever she wants, whichever wants. I thought she worked for us, and to me was, I don't know, nobody said anything, I still didn't get no answer.
Pablo, can I just clarify, what do you mean the DA? What, what happened with the DA, the district attorney talked to you?
No, somebody else from the police department talked to the DA, and the DA said, "Don't waste my time in this," because what they were bringing over there was irrelevant, nothing to.
So our police department went to the district attorney to complain about you?
Yes.
Instead of as.
That's what her complaint was, she made a complaint against me, and they went to the district attorney, and they said, "Please, don't waste my time," but.
I don't know anything about that.
But I wrote a letter to all you guys.
Yeah.
That's what the officer said, it's a record.
Did you file a complaint against Pablo?
I'm not commenting on this.
You're not gonna comment?
No, I'm not.
Okay, because Pablo, the last time you were here, I asked her to apologize to you, because.
You know the way that it works, you get onto the road?
Hold on one second.
Yeah, yes, and now you're telling us that she went to the, through the police department here to the district attorney to complain about you.
Can we time out one second? I wanna just get you through your public comment, and then if you wanna comment on your turn, whatever he's talking about, let's do it that way, so that, that way we don't jam each other.
Because there's a lot of things that people are saying here, and nobody's really answering them.
Well, I think we can answer them when it's time to give our report. That's what I'm gonna try to do with some of these questions, but it's public comment, so we don't get into a whole.
So I want to get an answer, then?
I'll give you the best answer I can give you, from what I understand, Mr. Pulido.
Okay, sorry about that, I know nothing about that, yeah.
Under the road.
I missed you on stuff I didn't.
Some family stuff, you know, bike projects.
All right. So Dee's supposed to be coming in shortly, I met with Joe on Friday regarding the siphon that the village had given the Town of Highlands United Youth months ago, it was five hundred dollars.
Right, okay, yeah.
So he had stated that I had to put it on an invoice and present it back or whatever, so as soon as she gets here, I will be able to do that, and I'll give that to you guys.
Or you can just drop it off, you know, as well.
Okay, well, he said that it had to be okay by the village again, the board again.
Okay.
So whichever.
I'm sure it's fine.
It was a great event, I heard it was a great event, so.
It was a lot of fun, it was a lot of fun, we had a great turnout, go ahead, Jimmy, would you wanna ask?
No, I'm okay, keep going.
The weather was beautiful, which is a plus for us always, or whatever, a lot of kids, a lot of people, a lot of families came out. Overall, a great day. One other comment that I needed to make, that, it's kind of like the same thing as to what Ron was saying. For three years, she has been saying, Melanie has been saying, we need to cut the, we need to cut spending, we need to possibly not do the water department that was gonna come in. She said that these bills were gonna go up, and which each and every one of them did. I've heard things as far as she's evil, she's lying, the whole nine yards, she's only told the truth with everything.
Yeah.
So, water, and everything, and I'm not trying to just put that all out there, I just, you know me, you know how I rock and roll. I express how I feel, and I haven't said this, so this is for me to say at this time. So I gave it to her, she has been saying the truth all the ti, and I'm not, everything that she says has come true. That's all I wanted to put out there, and thank you.
Ms. Snow?
I have a question, oh, do I have to introduce myself?
Please.
Bonnie Snow, Highland Falls, question and comment. The question I have is, I just read that the, is it the intermediate school in Highland Falls and the high school? Two of the schools in Highland Falls are gonna be housing students from Fort Montgomery. Are we going to be getting compensation from that? Is there such a thing?
I'll try to address it when it's our turn to talk, I have to try to keep it that way.
It's okay, that's my question.
I have, I have moved on.
Okay, 'cause that's a concern. So here's my comment, and it kind of talks about, in a way, what you're saying. I wanna thank, I've never met you, so it's nice to meet you, I wanna thank you for coming down from, what's it, six point seven to five point five or something? I only wish the town had done that, I have been advised the town went up nine percent. That to me is like, blinking, ridiculous. I don't know where the money was going, and I don't wanna say anything, but that's gonna be a consideration when the vote for those people come in, and I'd like to say that the board, the school board, needs to do the same thing that you guys did. They need, they need to be considerate of the people. Because there's a serious recession coming, very serious recession coming. Don't know that you listened to the news, you know, the news or read the newspapers. Lot of banks going out of business, stopping shops, cutting back, all these chain stores, this is just the beginning, it's just the beginning. And I thank you again because you listened to me, whether you liked it or not, you came back down as a budget. The town's gotta come back down on their budget, I'm only saying it because it's on, on there, because otherwise, I'm voting them out, and I know a lot of other people that will vote them out. And what I said several months ago will happen. West Point will move in, and I don't really wanna see that happen, but I thank you for your efforts. And yeah, answer me on that when you can. I've got one, what I forgot.
Oh, just hold on, Sally, I wanna make sure everybody else is.
Sorry.
That's okay, you have a problem, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I thought not, that, trustee Ramis is something like this, I, I see the thing over here behind you, fish eye. Village of Highland Falls, I mean, so it's, the town is not contributing, the recreation department is not contributing, this is totally by the village, right, I tell you. And, and there, I don't see any sponsors on there, you know, like, you know, Hoffman's Hardware sponsors, you know? And maybe I'd like to go and, and get my business to the sponsors. I applaud all the volunteers, I imagine the people on the, on the village board are volunteering on that day. My one question is, are there any village funds funding this? Or is it all the volunteers taking care of the cost? 'Cause I don't see any sponsors on here, so, you know, taxes are going up, and these events in our village are what make our village, and I applaud it, but I just wanna know if the village hack pair money is going forward.
Anybody else? Sally? Sure.
I'm sorry about.
No, no.
So Jerry Family Fun Day, I did have a conversation with Chris Echus. They're very close now, he's working very hard on that twelve percent that's supposed to be going, like, with the FEMA or whatever. He said that it's coming very, shortly, hopefully we will be receiving that, those monies. So that's all I wanted to say.
Oh, I have a little other question.
Thank you.
Once upon a time, Roxanne Donneri used to go to Washington DC to try to get funded. Is that a non-existent thing anymore, does that not happen?
Yes, sir. So can't be, it's probably, it's being obvious. You have a name, you worked hard for it.
I can't hear you. It's okay.
This gentleman has a name, but. Mister Drayson, I'm gonna give you another minute, I'm gonna give you like a minute, because you got up already, so I, these other folks who got up again.
It's okay.
Oh, a second, she was like thirty seconds, so I'm gonna give you a little latitude.
Okay, go ahead, talk, I'm gonna forget what.
You've beaten fifteen seconds up, address the board, please. Address the board, please. You have an income.
I have an income.
There are other people that have incomes that do not have our incomes. So when we talk about a five percent tax increase, it depends on what income you're talking about. That five percent to you or me, or to you or to other people. Oh, well, maybe that's a lot of it over a year.
No, it isn't, not to me.
No, 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 oh, just, oh, Mister Drayson, please, address the board, this happens when you spin around, just address the board.
It's okay, it's okay, steady, easy.
Steady, I'm calm.
I hope you will.
Extremely. So when it comes to other people, that five percent, again, is medication, food. I'm gonna stop you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Who have you gotten two or three times? Yes, please, I'm on down. Christine?
Olivia, Olivia, Village President.
Thank you.
Just a few random things to start off with, I'm wondering if there is an update on the rock wall that has fallen from Brazil and rolling down the West Street, is there any action or movement on that situation? Before I continue my randoms, I do think that the residents are collectively, don't always speak for you, but I think that we're looking for a little more transparency, and I think even just having a little bit more of like a discussion setting at the meetings, I think would go a long way, maybe easier for the rest of the public at home to follow the conversations when the questions that are being asked are answered at the same time. I, I get, where you going, that happened to me? Is there anything collectively to be done about the stray cats that are rambunctious at this point in time around the village? that are rambunctious at this point in time around the village? Um, also, I would like to see if we can step up maybe within our police force something about the vehicles that are driving around that are bumping the music overly loud at any given time of day or night. Um, it's not really something that a resident can call on because it's there and gone in just a matter of minutes, but it's something that's regularly occurring throughout the village. Um, I, I do think that, again, collectively, we're really looking for a little more transparency from the boards, and I would like to just give the example that the budget meetings that have gone on, the last one where the town had raised significantly their budget, it was scheduled on the same night as a village board meeting. So just doing things like that, uh, really kind of split up the public of being able to attend and be a part of these meetings. And the last budget meeting, it was held for the village. It was held on the third week of the month, which usually is two. It was held at the village hall, which usually we're here. And it was also held at five o'clock, when our meetings are usually at seven. So I may have been the only idiot walking around town, wondering why the building was empty because I had missed the details of that meeting. But I do think that, um, we need a little more transparency and clearer discussion from the board.
And attendance.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, Ms. D. Just wanna let the residents know that the chief has given us a direct, direct order to be actively looking for anybody with these loud radios. It is very annoying, and I live in a community too, and I can't stand it myself. So we are actively looking for them, and if we find like the, the local people, we try to give a warning the first time, you know, just let them know, uh, but after that, we're gonna be ticketing and certainly anybody coming through, because it is very annoying, you're sitting in your house, trying to relax after a long day's work, or early morning or late night, and we don't appreciate either, so just let everybody know, we are looking for them, and we will actively ticket them when we get them.
I'm sorry, I just, I've heard my last line. Um, one question on, was there a verdict done with the life fee for, um, the meetings? Did we reach a point where we're gonna move forward with that or not?
Okay, everybody okay with public comment? Thank you, I just wanna first thank everybody that got up tonight. I think it went pretty well. Um, and before I move on to the trustee reports, I understand the dialogue portion, and believe me, I would, it would be easier than to keep track and then try to answer towards the end. But just going in what has happened in the past, and I, and I don't, it's okay if you use the word transparency. I don't think anybody's trying to be untransparent by doing it at the end and trying to answer the questions. It just seems to be like, we're trying to monitor the time, because we do get a lot of folks at the meeting, which is great. We do get, despite all the different schedules and all the different meetings, we do get a pretty good turnout at our meetings, which I, I full want to appreciate. Uh, it doesn't always have to be good news, and it doesn't always have to be, you know, rainbows and uniforms. Uh, but I think if we start getting into a dialogue, we'll eat away your time. Uh, we may take away from some of the importance of what you're trying to say. And I think it's important, if residents get up, they use their words, not our words. Uh, because sometimes we get, you know, we get a little political, and just the nature of the beast. But I think if folks come up and it's genuine, uh, it's important. So that's my response. Um, but we'll turn it over to the trustees now, and I'll start with trustee Guerrero.
Oh, okay, thanks. I agree with you, um, but I think the problem was, you know, we get lost into arguing back and forth, so we all decided that we're gonna actually answer it at the end of the public comment. I do think that the public comment should be after the liaisons actually speak. That way, you can come back and say, but why did you just say what you said? Okay, instead of having you speak first, and then we're speaking, and you have no way to actually counter what we're saying, or ask more about what we're saying to you. So, uh, I don't know, I, I did not agree to the way this is all set up. Um, I do wanna say that I have been making an effort to be open and transparent, but as you know, for the past three years, I've been faced quite a bit, I've faced quite a bit of resistance and accusations of saying the wrong thing, being dishonest, not knowing what I'm talking about. It's been very, very challenging, uh, but I am committed to maintaining honesty and clarity, uh, despite all of that. Um, okay. So Jim, are you gonna answer what the people just said on your own time as the mayor? Or do you want all of us to answer it individually, or address certain comments about it? How, how do we do this?
Well, it's, it's your time to shine, so you, you talk, and, and, yeah, shine. And, uh, and, and I'm gonna, I have all the things that were said, and I have my little chart, and I'm gonna answer them with the best answer I can give, but you feel free to.
Alright, so the first one was about, uh, have had mentioned Linay. Uh, you notice, our village clerk is not here, okay? Linay Masares abruptly resigned two weeks ago. She just decided she doesn't want it anymore, right? And, uh, I think we should make a motion to actually accept her resignation. And, um, and, but first, let me read, yeah, but let me read her resignation notice, okay? So this is from Linay, and that was dated May twenty, twenty twenty-four. She says, Mayor and the Board of Trustees, I'm formally writing to inform you of my resignation effective immediately. I wanna express my gratitude for the opportunities and professional growth during my time as village clerk. However, after a careful consideration, I've decided to resign due to a hostile work environment created by the mayor in which I felt threatened and has adversely affected my overall well-being. Due to the circumstances of my resignation, I'm requesting vacation buyback for the eighty hours I've accumulated. Again, thank you for the opportunities I've had at Village Hall. I wish you continued success in the future. Sincerely, Linay Masares. Ms. Masares, so that's a very telling resignation letter, and I'm very honest, okay? She put up a lot of, uh, she put up with a lot of shenanigans, not just with Mayor De Nofrio, but also with Deputy Mayor De Salvo. Mister De Salvo, I know you have political, ambitious political plans of your own. You actually had the nerve to call her afterward to ask her if she would come back if for some reason Mayor De Nofrio were no longer mayor. So I don't know what that was about, but you did call her and ask her that. Um, so is that part of the plan? Um, you know, is, you're taking over, you're gonna make him resign? I think that was Miss De Gait's question.
You should be forced out, how do you allow somebody with a hostile work environment to stay?
I wish you would've made your comment at public comment, please.
They got, they got a plan.
That's fine.
I don't have a plan.
Yeah, but that, yeah, but that should've been on the agenda, that should've been on the agenda, which it wasn't, you said, like.
Okay, it's not public comment, I can't get into your dialogue with you. I didn't make the agenda, trustee Guerrero?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Who made the agenda?
So frankly, uh.
You know what?
Yeah.
I gotta say something. From a legal standpoint?
Actually, Ms. Snow, I'm sorry, I can't.
It's all hearsay.
I know, but I can't.
I'm just reading her letter of resignation, and that's her letter of resignation.
Please.
Please, please, I speak.
I can't have them talking, so I can't have you talking, please.
So frankly, I really don't know if she even lasted as long as she did under such conditions. Her resignation really speaks volumes about the environment she had to endure. And this is not just, and I'll answer that, Bonnie, uh, of one person's experience. Over the past year, our community has witnessed abrupt resignations of two very outstanding women. Linay Masares, who's the village clerk, okay? And our first ever female police chief. She lasted six months before she turned in her resignation. Both women have impressive resumes, they have commendable work ethics. They chose to resign only after a short amount of time, okay, in office. These women did not leave because they were incompetent, they were not, okay? They were unwilling to serve. They left because they could no longer tolerate the toxic, hostile environment created by Mayor De Nofrio and Deputy Mayor De Salvo. And, um, they felt harassed and undermined and wrongfully accused of being incompetent, okay? Because they didn't agree to doing things the way they want it done. I'm saying this because I've experienced them, okay? I've experienced this kind of harassment firsthand for the past three years, a little bit more, okay? What I'm going to say is not, is gonna be difficult for everybody's ears, okay? And you're gonna find it offensive, as I did, as I do, okay, I found it offensive. I've been called a fucking bitch by Mayor De Nofrio in front of everybody in Village Hall, okay? In public. I was given the middle finger by him, he would honk his SUV. I would turn around, and he's giving me the middle finger while honking. Many times, my husband's walking with me, and we're like, as I'm walking down Main Street, okay? Um, I, he told me to get the fuck out of Village Hall.
Can you just use the F-word, or?
No, 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 you, I told you, it's gonna hurt your ears, just like it hurt my ears.
It's not hurting my ears, but it's public and.
The public needs to know how, how terrible, what Linay had to endure, what I had to endure, okay? So, so the other thing, so I'll tell you. You told me just about a month ago that I don't know my ass from a hole in the ground. You said that to me, Mister De Salvo, and there were people in the room when you said that, okay? I don't know my ass from a hole in the ground. You also said to me, I'm so stupid, that I don't even know how to add. Okay, so I, so this is environment that I've had to live with in Village Hall for over three years. Despite, so why do I remain? Why didn't I just resign like Linay did, or the female police chief did? Because I was elected by you, okay? And my paycheck does not depend on you, Mister De Salvo, or the mayor, unlike the police chief, unlike Linay. And that independence has really allowed me to continue serving the public for what they elected me for, without fear of retaliation. Our village really deserves leaders who prioritize the community's well-being, not, and not personal vendettas. So, um, and I don't think it's you or Mister De Nofrio. So that's what I will say about Linay's resignation. I would like to make a motion to, uh, accept her resignation and to give her the eighty hours of, uh, of, uh,
you have a little.
Of vacation buyback that she's requesting.
You can accept her resignation, but I can't comment on the eighty hours, whether that's true or that has to be something you need to consider. I mean, just saying my eighty hours, she may have eighty hours and she may be entitled to them, but does this board know that for sure?
I think we can probably pass it with veri, with verification from the treasurer or somebody.
Okay, it's fine.
You wanna do that now?
Yeah, yeah.
And what, you're not gonna make her, I said I made a motion. Oh, you want me to, two different motions? Okay, I said.
Just for verification.
I, I'm sure Linay's not lying about her eighty hours of vacation buyback, but okay.
Nobody said.
Alright, I would like to make a motion to accept Linay Masares's resignation and to give her her eighty hours of vacation buyback if, upon verification that she has it.
Second. Sorry.
It's okay.
You get a second. Could you have that by chance, just that motion, just so we have it worded right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. I assume you're, you're accepting it with regret.
Yeah, you wanna end that with regret.
Uh, or not.
Do I accept it with regret? Do I accept it? No, I, I'm not gonna be disingenuous to say I accept it with regret. Yeah.
Yes, I know.
You're right.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a second, everybody in favor? Yes, opposed?
Okay, so the second thing I'd like to talk about is the senior center use, okay? I would really like to recognize Ms. Kathy Jones and Jen Gardulo, she's not here, for creating a very beautiful garden in the back. Okay, that really, that's amazing, okay? And not using a single cent of taxpayer dollars, that's really wonderful. Uh, you did it through legitimate fundraising. I believe some funding from ONR, other contractors gave their time, their effort, and it's beautiful. Thank you. That space we needed revitalizing, and, and you guys did it. And also, I agree, Ms. Jones, with the email that you sent the entire board about ten days ago, okay? Uh, regarding the use of this senior center. She told us that this building, we know this, it's bought by and renovated by grants from the state. So far, that totals over four hundred thousand, not two hundred. That's actually way more than that. Four hundred thousand dollars of state money for this building, it's for the seniors, okay? I agree with, it's primarily for the seniors, it's to be used as a senior center, you're absolutely correct. The senior citizens of the village do not need to ask for permission from the mayor or from the deputy, from us, okay? And you are doing such a great job revitalizing the senior club, actually, the Highlanders quilting. I, I, they seem to be much more active now than ever before. Um, so I don't think you need to take, get permission from us to use a senior center as a senior center, okay? And you should have priority. If it's a senior center event, it should be priority over meetings or anything else. Doesn't make sense that you should be waiting for us, okay? Number three, the community fund day, that was really, uh, sounds like it was really well attended. Uh, and to answer, to answer, um, Ms. Dorsey's, uh, five hundred dollars that she, she was given, I have the minutes from March four, that was four months ago, and we actually did approve a donation of five hundred dollars to the Tana Highlands United Youth, okay? And this is supposed to come out of the donation line, and it was unanimously carried. So I don't know why you still don't have it, the five hundred dollars.
So, no, so we just put in for it on Friday. I just got the receipts for it, so I can't present it to you guys.
I see, okay, alright, so there should be no trouble.
It's already been approved up to five hundred? So I would just bring it to village hall and the process.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I think she tried last weekend, uh, okay, anyway.
Joe, Joe told me that I had to come back to the meeting tonight and have the village approve it.
Okay, uh, so what else do I have to say? Uh, Pablo, okay, that's news to me. I can't believe that, uh, that
Thank you.
we would use our police department to actually file a complaint against you when you were the one to complain to us about the behavior of our village attorney. So I, I had no knowledge of what that's, what's going on with that, but I would find that inappropriate, okay? To actually use our resources, Mister De Salvo, you're the police commissioner, to use our resources to actually complain about a, a public citizen who comes here to express, uh, his feelings about what's going on. It's, it's not right, okay, that you should be threatened, any of you should be threatened for saying what you think. Okay, this is a democracy, this is America, you should be able to say it without an attorney threatening you if you say anymore, okay, that's not right, okay? And we have it on video, you didn't threaten her. I watched that over and over to see if there was any inkling of that happening, I didn't see it, okay? Um, the school budget vote, I agree. Uh, Bonnie, I, you know what? I don't think they should, I think they should've told us about that before the school budget vote, that they were gonna shut down the elementary school, right? I mean, come on, not vote on this raise in taxes, forty million dollars, and then all of a sudden say, oh, by the way, we're gonna shut down the elementary school and put it in the intermediate school. That didn't make sense to me either. Uh, I would have to make a correction about the town tax budget. The town taxes for villagers increased by two point nine percent, okay? But for the Fort Montgomery residents, it increased by, I think, seven point nine, eight percent. But for villagers, our town taxes will only go up by two point nine. Uh, the cost of the fishing derby, I'm actually not sure, I'm, maybe you'll answer that, Jim.
I'll answer that.
Yeah, are, are taxpayers paying for this event?
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna answer that, okay? Alright, because I know a lot of people who come here, Dee, Sally. Because I know a lot of people who come here, Dee, Sally, Anne, you know, um, uh, um, American Legion, uh, they all fundraise, they fundraise for things that are close to their heart, for things that they're interested in. They don't ask the taxpayers to pay, uh, those events that they have a passion for. So I think it's only fair that we shouldn't use taxpayer money for pet projects just because we're trustees, okay? Uh, two Saturdays from now, speaking of which, there's gonna be a Juneteenth celebration, it's gonna be a three-day event. Uh, Ann Molina, Taiki, Dee, John Flynn, a coordinated effort by many, many organizations, the Center, American Legion, Chamber of Commerce, Soldiers for Life. They're gonna have a three-day celebration on Friday, June fourteen. Uh, there's a wellness workshop at the American Legion from twelve to three, and then a welcoming, social delictious from six to nine. On Saturday, there's gonna be a parade on Main Street, starting at eleven. And then there's gonna be a festival, uh, from twelve to four with vendors, food trucks. That's on Saturday, June fifteen. And then at night, there's gonna be a gala at the American Legion, it's forty dollars a person for dinner and entertainment. And then on Sunday, June sixteen, there's gonna be a barbecue at the American Legion, that's twenty dollars a person. Uh, and you have to bring your own beer. I, I was gonna ask Mr. DiNofrero about an update for the FEMA projects, how much money we've gotten, which projects have been completed, you know, are we staying on budget? Also, the New York Ford grant of four and a half million, you know, the summary of the two workshops so far, but he's not here. So, I think the reason for asking that question is to make sure everybody knows, because we're getting an influx of millions of dollars from the federal government and from the state. And people need to be, you know, confident that it's not going in places it shouldn't go, right? And the only way you become confident is to actually, the transparency that everybody's talking about. Where are you putting this money? What projects are finished? Are we staying on budget and all that stuff? Um, building department report, uh, for the month of May, uh, the building department issued fifteen permits, received another eleven permit applications, gave out twelve certificate of compliances, performed forty-six building permit inspections, six fire safety inspections, and completed seven point requests. That's all I have.
Trustee, ready?
Sure. Um, so I'll start with the liaison report. So, our average volume for sewer treatment was one point one million gallons a day. It's a lot, but, uh, it did come down from the past one. Our crew down there is working with, uh, some of the contractors, uh, Aventus on the east path on the clarifiers. Uh, they're saving whatever they can off of some of the rails and things like that, save us some money, um, that they can reuse. And they're getting new path put in. Um, also, we had, continue to have these water and sewer breaks. Uh, there was a couple, uh, past couple of weeks, uh, we have old infrastructure. We have old infrastructure here. People have to realize that. And when we put money aside, it's so we can take care of these ASAP. Um, we all turn the faucet on and the water comes out, flush the toilet, and it goes away. Uh, and our crews are out there, uh, anytime something like this happens, uh, well beyond their regular scheduled work hours to ensure that the village residents' infrastructure will be fixed and working, uh, in, in a timely manner. Um, I mean, we had, uh, a break in Pellwood, we had one up on Readout, one on Chestnut. Those are just to name a few of the most recent ones. Again, uh, our crews, our skeleton crews that we have, um, they're, continue to work together. Uh, they get support from the sewer department, uh, to the DPW and vice versa, whether it's with blacktopping, uh, repairs, um, to the breaks, uh, whatever they need to do, they work well together. And my hat tips to those guys. They are out there, uh, every day to make this a better place for us all to live in. Uh, and they just continue to do their general maintenance down there at the sewer department. Uh, all permits, um, are in order. So, when I was leaving the village the other day, last Thursday, um, I noticed a parade. Parade was American water trucks. I was like, wow, what's going on? So it was, uh, on Mount Hattling, and it was Thursday. And I stopped, and one of the gentlemen that used to work for us, Tindari, uh, had spearheaded this program, and I think they've been doing it for two years now. And they do cleanup on the High Brook. Um, and they were there, uh, and they had bags and debris and everything, and there was a whole gaggle of them out there. But, uh, it's in conjunction with the Riverkeeper, uh, project. And they try to clean up whenever they can, uh, Riverkeeper's all over the place. So my hat's again, off to somebody like that stepping up and seeing so many people out there. Um, and I'm gonna probably say eight percent of them don't even live here in the village, but they're out there doing a great job. I tell you, put a smile on my face when, uh, I was going up the hill. Uh, another thing that, um, has transpired, um, and I had spoken at the last town board meeting, uh, briefly with the supervisor back, he had gotten an email, and I'm in contact with, uh, Councilman Sullivan. It's about battery storage facilities. And these are lithium ion battery storage facilities. And what's gonna transpire is, uh, there's some bills up in Albany, uh, that would take away our zoning rights for, to allow something like this to transpire. Now, do we have a big place here in the village for this to happen? No, but maybe we do. So, we're gonna have to see where this goes, but when we start to work on the zoning portion of the code, that's something that we need to look at as well as the town. I told them I'd help to work with them as well. Because not too long ago, there was a battery storage facility out in Warwick that caught on fire. It burned for days, days on end. They can't put them out, they can't put them out. And all they had is wax mold, and it built, and you have to wait until they burn out. And now they're so, they contained them, but they burned. So, I don't wanna see that happen here, especially since we're so small. Um, so we're just gonna have to make sure we word something in the zoning portion of our code. Uh, so, this mandate that's gonna come down from the governor's office in Albany, uh, we have some payout, so it doesn't happen. All right, um, Mr. Malika, about the fishing derby, yes? Uh, I was asked many years ago about this fishing derby and bringing it back. I remember, uh, when I was a kid, it was fishing derby, uh, it used to be down across from where the ambulance corps is now. And that's where the Hollow Falls Fishing Club used to be, they used to be clubhouse there. And actually, they sold ice cream there back in the day, it's a pretty cool place. So, anyway, um, sure, I stepped up to the plate. And looking at during, uh, a couple of administrations ago, there was money that was given, uh, out, um, to, um, some other organizations, ten thousand dollars. So I was hoping I could get a little piece of that. And we worked. So what it's costing us this year as the village residents is a thousand dollars. And all I hear from, for many years, was there's nothing for the kids to do. So I think this has been a successful event. Uh, and it's a small piece of our tax dollars that does something good. We had seventy families show up at the last event with, uh, you know, younger kids, older kids, kids that weren't even old enough to, you know, cast a line yet, but they wanted to, their parents. So it was a great event. Um, and yes, we do get a lot of sponsors. And I will recognize those sponsors in my follow-up letter after the event. Uh, but like you said, there, there's two that definitely step up. And those are the two hardware stores that give us the buckets every year that we fill up with some stuff. You know, I mean, they're catching some shit. So it's hooks, bobbers, sinkers, and some bait. And then we've had, uh, our former trustee, Gary Phillips, he always steps up to the plate and he donates the hot dogs, the hot dog lunch, uh, water, chips, and stuff like that. Uh, the Orange County Federation always steps up to the plate. Uh, we're gonna do the, uh, breakfast hopefully this year. Uh, and I got some of the village employees that are gonna step up. Um, and again, it's the first come, first served, you know what I mean? So, uh, those are just some of the things that we do there. And then there is so many people behind the scenes that donate stuff. All the bicycles we give away, we throw them away. Uh, a lot of the other fishing gear that we give away, all donate. So, um, and they don't wanna have any of that, they don't. They just wanna give. Now, a lot of people have came up to me and said, I wanna give money. No, we don't take no money. If you wanna bring some fishing gear over, you give it away, we throw it in the buckets. Because I don't wanna get involved in anyone. That, I don't want that, I don't want that. Because then it just turns into a problem. So, yes, we do use someone, um, and this year it's gonna be a thousand and one dollars, I believe, for, for that event. Uh, I'm trying to, and I've been trying to get this event to expand because this is during the National Outdoor Day weekend. And during this weekend, uh, because we know all kids don't fish, but I need other people to step up to the plate. So some of my ideas were, uh, to have, um, our Little League have a swing for the fences. And what we could do is we could get the Boldens to come up with one of their pitchers or even the West Point, uh, team, and our teams from O'Neill itself. And we get donated balls, all the kids are out in the field, everybody gets a swing. You know, you catch a ball, you get to take it home. Um, again, shoot, shoot for the stars. I'm looking forward to somebody to, and I don't wanna run all these, I'll run fishing derby. I'll coordinate the times for everybody, and it could turn into a, a, a two-day event for sure. So, say we did something at the basketball court, right? Because like I said, every.
I forgot my question.
Everybody doesn't fish.
Thank you, Ron.
Why are you condescending to?
Everybody doesn't.
Whoa, 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 please.
Everybody doesn't fish, right? So now, maybe we do something with, uh, kids that like to do basketball, right? So we have, you know, shoot for the first fifty kids that show up, yeah, we give away fifty basketballs. We'll get more kids on those courts, a good thing. Another thing that I was thinking, another thing that I was thinking about was, another thing that I was thinking about was canoe now, or kayaking. And I've been in touch with the kayak community, and they would be more than willing to come up here. And we get a small little kayak and we put it in the pool, so it's a controlled environment, and have the kids show up and learn kayaking one-on-one. A great thing. And then at the end of the day, we don't wanna keep the kayak, we give it away to one of the people that actually tried it out. I spoke with the, the Boy Scouts that come down and do camping one-on-ones, right? How to set up a tent, another great thing for the kids to do. But this takes more than just one person. So if anybody would like to step up to the plate to help do these things, it would be great. Uh, another good thing would be to have the K nine units come, and I believe they are coming this Saturday, um, the K nine units from, uh, West Point and from the Sheriff's Department. We're hoping to get them down there so they can interact with kids, with their K nine units, which would be another great thing. Um, you know, so there's a lot that we can do. And then to top it off, at the end of this weekend event, and we've already done it over there, I've spoken with the rec department about having a family picnic, movie night, right? To top off on Sunday, right? They already do it, they already do it. So we just have them come and do it with us. And it would be a great thing. So we can turn this into a, an event that, uh, will, will shine for everybody. But, you know, we're here to look for good things, not all these bad things. So let's try to do something good for the kids. Um, and then ano- another thing, uh, was the loud music. And I know Mr. Lilos, uh, said something about it. The easiest way, when you hear this loud music, and the quickest way, is to dial four four six four nine one one. Because that's gonna go directly to our dispatch. It's not gonna go out to Goshen and then come back here because loud music isn't on their top priority, but down here it is. So you call up four nine one one, and they'll have a patrol car out there. And there's a lot of other things going on too, that I have spoken to Chief about, that we need to address. Um. That's what I got for time.
Uh, trustee Carol.
Yeah, the, um, the water plant, uh, I was impressed this week, you know, it was only, it was only two weeks ago that they told me that they were having that, uh, they're, uh, got a contract to do the, uh, the camera in the, in the pipes. And, uh, the report came back that they found nine leaks. First two they attacked, the first one, um, there's fifty thousand gallons of water leaking out of it per day, you know? And, uh, that, that really impressed me, I mean, uh, well, in, in two ways, you know, one is negative way. How could you know, not know the fifty, fifty gallons a day were going? Um, and the second one, thirty gallons, thirty thousand gallons of water. That's eighty thousand gallons. And we only put out seven hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons a day. So that was ten percent, over ten percent, we were losing, uh, right there. So I thought that was, um, you know, very positive, they corrected those two. Uh, I haven't been able to talk to Dale, um, about that, uh, the other seven leaks, you know, and find out how much. Now, they rough estimated the whole total of loss within a hundred thousand. Uh, that first two took up eighty thousand, so I imagine it's gonna be a lot more. So they're, they're working really hard up there. And I, I don't know much about the, uh, water plant yet, uh, but, you know, they have a couple other, other projects going besides this one. And, um.
Are the leaks in the streets or at the plant?
It's leaking in the streets.
Okay.
Yeah. And I just talked to Pablo today, he said that he thinks there's another one down in, um, White Greens. So we'll look into that tomorrow. Now, I also heard from somebody today around five o'clock, and I didn't get a chance to look at it. They said they drove by the first, um, just north of the crossroads on, on the, uh, Stone King. That brook was dried out today. And that, uh, that, it's called Gleser Hollow, that valley that it comes out of. And that meant that the water on our brook coming down would be very low, you know? So, uh, he said, he saw both of those things today. So tomorrow we'll be looking into that, because that's kinda scary, you know? That, that means Bob Meadow's not, it's not, uh, producing like it should. Uh, so tomorrow I'll look into those things. Uh, otherwise, uh, those things seem okay to me. Now, I had a meeting with, uh, Richard Solomon the other day, down at the Fort Montgomery Sewer Plant. And, um, I just wanted to get around him, because I, you know, I have my respect for his knowledge of, uh, the community and, uh, and its workings. And, uh, it was really good. He said to me that what he would like to do is see the Hollow Falls, uh, sewer system take over the trailer park in Fort Montgomery, because it's actually in our property, and bring that into our system. And that would open up, because they're working at a maximum down there in Fort Montgomery. They don't have enough capacity to take care of the forty-one condos that they're gonna build across from me, although on that hill. And then another group over by, uh, Corbin Hill, that's a developer, is gonna build some there. So they don't have the capacity with their sewer plant to do that. It costs them a lot of money to enlarge their sewer plant.
Another, do you have capacity?
If they give us the trailer park and we have the capacity to take it, uh, that would free them up to be able to control those two projects down in Fort Montgomery. So working together with the town, the village and the town, uh, would increase our, our revenue on, on, uh, sewer and plants too, because we'd be getting that fifty-five thousand that Fort Montgomery gets for the, for the trailer park, which should be ours anyway. So, you know, there, you know, we're not all, uh, we're not really just sitting around here, you know? Had another meeting with the Association of Graduates, uh, last week, over in front of the, the shades and the park. And we talked about what they're gonna do there and how they're gonna accommodate the parking and what kind of structure they're putting up. You know, they're gonna take down shades and what, how they're gonna, uh, you know, design that. And the two houses behind there, where they're gonna do the parking and stuff. So, you know, things are working in a positive way. We also, um, I drew up a thing for more parking on Main Street by making Main Street one-way and widening the sidewalks by about four or five feet going off this side so that we could, uh, you know, have more of a cafe look to what is, what does get developed here. Um, so they're all good things and, uh, you know, that, that, I know with. So, there are all good things and, uh, you know, that, that, and I know with the forty, the forty thousand, five hundred, the four million, five hundred, you know, they talked about awnings and stuff. Well, that's part of what I've been trying to do is get, uh, Belgian blocks on the sidewalk unless the extra, the, the four or five feet that we can come out. And if it's a side, if the street is one-way, we can also, on this side, park pointed, pointed in, which would give us twice as much parking. And we could do that all the way from, because it's happening down. So, uh, and it would be one way into the other, into the, um, real village or the villages are on both sides. It would be only one way and we could make the sidewalks on both sides a little bigger, maybe three feet on each side. So, we've been talking about those things. And, um, that's about it. Thanks.
Jen, before, I just, I just wanna acknowledge that there are people who want, who have their hands raised in the back-
Yeah, I appreciate that, but we're not, we're not-
You mean, you're not gonna call them after we-
No, no, we, we had a very lengthy public comment period. Folks got up numerous times, so no, I'm, I'm not.
I think you should've promised that there are people who want to speak.
That's okay. Is that okay?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry too. Is it okay, is it okay, my speaker?
Oh, yes, I'm just wondering if that the public's being-
We'll pass a motion to pass this from the Town of Highlands United Youth. Uh, it's for purchase of propane tank, tent rental, and, uh-
It was one of the centuries.
Motion through?
Total is five hundred dollars.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second, uh, just. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll, um, I'll drop this off and then-
Thank you. I, I have a copy. You, you go.
Okay, a couple of quick things. Mr. Leahy, in regards to attendance. I don't actually know if there's a formal attendance policy, like you have to meet so many meetings. I'm gonna check, actually. I would imagine that the New York Conference of Mayors or the Association of Towns would have-
Why, why would there be a requirement? Why don't you guys just show up? Because you're on board.
Can I, can I just?
And that's when the meetings happen.
You asked a question. I'm gonna try to answer it in a second. So, uh, I don't know if there's an official attendance policy, but I don't disagree with you. We should absolutely try to attend meetings, um, that we are on the board elected to. I do know things come up, uh, people are away. We had a meeting last week. Not everybody on the board was here.
Yeah, I had one since trustee Phillips was here.
I don't know if that's accurate. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna debate you on it.
I watched him sit through. That was accurate.
We had a, I didn't see, I don't know if you were at the last work session meeting and we didn't have a full board then either. But I, I'm just saying-
I'm talking about these meetings, the public, regular public meetings.
Well, okay, you can't pick and choose what you, meetings are meetings. It was an official meeting.
You're on the board. You're on the board.
Okay, I, I gave you the answer and this is what I'm trying to avoid is the dialogue, okay?
Yeah.
Um, uh, Ms. Degavre, I, I had a lot of comments with, uh, former, from now, from tonight, the village clerk. Uh, I don't exactly understand what your question was. I did say, "I'm sorry to see her go," and I thought she did a good job.
No, I just wanted to-
Okay, whoa, 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 that's my answer to you. Okay, um, Sally, we took care of you. Chris Eekerson, twelve percent for FEMA. We have been getting the twelve and a half percent from the state of New York.
You have already?
Yes, it, yes, we have. We have been getting it in. Um, according to the state, I don't put too much stock in some of the, uh, of our legislators for the area, because everything we're hearing from Albany, which is, you know, the governor's office, is it's first come, first served for the twelve and a half percent, and when it runs out, it runs out.
So, I know what-
Hold on. I'm just, I'm just trying to give you the answers, okay? Couple of you made a comments about the taxes, which I'll, I'm gonna come back to circle back around. Um, Mr. Malakah, Village, uh, Spencer Village, uh, sponsors. Yeah, I think Mr. Ramus answered you thoroughly on the fishing gear.
More of it.
Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure, just going through my list.
I saw you put him in his place, so I was asking the question.
I, I believe I was talking to Mr. Malakah. Ms. Snow, uh, intermediate school was your question in regards to compensation? It's really a school matter. Um, I was as surprised as, I think everybody was, that they made the change there to house the school in the, in the intermediate, um, on, on Mountain Avenue. I, I don't understand the full play there. I, I just read what was in the articles. Um, I do believe they're trying to move some kids around and, um, fit the kids on Mountain Avenue and then I think move seventh to eighth to the high school. Just an FYI, I wanna say maybe ten years ago, twelve years ago, they did this. Uh, seventh and eighth was actually in the high school for a little time period during construction, I believe, on Mountain Avenue. So, I, I'm not exactly sure of the timeframe, but it did happen. Uh, I think at that particular time, they had a little more planning. Uh, sometimes from Albany, you get what you get. Not an excuse, um, just saying that may have been the reason why the short timeframe. But I do agree, if they, if they were aware of it, it should've came up at some point around budget or election time.
Shoot for Washington, too.
Oh, uh, I'm sorry, uh, taxes and Impact Aid, okay. Uh, you're right, Roxanne Dunry did do a lot of work with Impact Aid when she was on the school board. And she usually did go down to Washington DC. Um, I don't know if they're yearly or semi-annually, uh, to have a meeting. Uh, the school board does still do that. I believe Mr. Sullivan did it for a time when he was on the board. Uh, and then I'm not exactly sure who does it now. I believe Ms. Wallace actually goes, uh, from the school board. But they do attend those meetings. I don't know if they're annually or biannually.
You make a request.
For Impact Aid, correct, yeah. Well, it's really to fight for our percentage.
That's what I meant.
Yeah. But I would ask them for a better answer.
And Ms. Wallace is on, at least doing that.
Okay, so that's, uh, okay. Uh, Ms. Olivia, you had a couple of, uh, good ones. Uh, actually, in tonight's bills and claims, we paid for a program called Tara. Are you familiar with this program?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, if you bring them, uh, either they'll capture, uh, humanely, uh, or if you bring them a cat, they'll neuter it, spade it, depending on what needs to be done. They'll try to find a home for it, I believe. Um, but also, please, if there's any issue, call the Town of Highlands Animal Control. I believe they should have, be, have the ability-
They only do dogs.
I don't. Okay, I'll, I'll check. I'll check. I'll check on that, but the Tara program does-
They tax.
Can we? The Tara program just, uh, does come to town. I do know that. T-A-R-A. It's, it's, uh, it's seen there.
Jimmy, do you know when they come?
Um, I don't know, but I can get you a number. I'll get your contact number.
That would be great, 'cause I have an overabundance of power with my-
Yes, I heard. Okay.
Well, that was my question. Is there like something to do with the whole village? Because I know it's not just my area.
We, we signed up with that program, I wanna say, uh, six years ago? They do come regularly.
Well, fair enough. Doing a very job, that.
It's a, it's definitely an uphill battle. Uh, the rock wall that you mentioned on West Street?
Yes.
Was it West Street?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, West Street. Um, there is some movement with that. I think we're just getting through a couple little boundary lines. Uh, I believe the plan to, uh, repair the wall for the new owners, they have. Um, so I think we're probably, um, a meeting away for that getting okay to move forward and fixing it on West Street. The big one you talked about, right?
Yeah. And if they're not reusing those rocks, I'll take-
I don't know exactly the engineering plan, because it is a private, it's a private plan. It's really their plan that we, yeah, I know. Uh, I think it might be a combination of, uh, new rock and mortar and, uh, yeah, yeah, we'll work on it. Yeah, and then if there's any closures with that road at the time or whatever has to be done at that time, we'll, we'll notify as best as possible. Town budget meeting that you had mentioned was actually a special meeting from the town that they planned. So, I, sometimes the special meetings are tough to schedule and work around. Especially if ours is on the first and third and theirs is on the second and fourth. I know that the, the approval of their budget meeting, uh, was a special meeting to approve that. As was ours, I believe, which is why the times are a little different sometimes. Uh, and just as a recap for Fort Montgomery residents, if you looked at your bill and you're a Fort Montgomery resident, there was a two-point-three percent town increase. It was a thirty-nine percent increase to the highway portion of the town building. And it was a five percent increase to the Fort Montgomery Light District. We don't have all those breakups. Ours is all kinda together. Uh, again, not a criticism. It's just that was what you saw on your bill if you lived in Fort Montgomery. On, and, on addition to ambulance and fire, which I understand. I mean, they have, you know, nominal increases. Um, but it's not broken out as it is on a village budget, because we're all one district. So, that's the difference between the bills. If you've got a town bill, if you lived in Fort Montgomery, you have five or six line items on it. For us, it's one. So, that, that may be the little bit of difference. I think that was, oh, musicals. I can't agree more with trustee Ramus. Uh, you know, we talk about nine-one-one, but nine-one-one is just for emergencies. So, this is a non-emergency call, which they wouldn't handle. So, please, I know you might think the car already passed. Call anyway. Call anyway, because what ends up happening is, is once in a while, we go see the blotter just to see what's going on in the sense of, are they doing the, are they making the calls? So, if you guys bring up something in the meeting saying, "Hey, loud music. Hey, kids out late making noise. Hey, uh, somebody spray painted. Hey, who's there?" You know, we check to see if there's a response and make sure someone's going to check it out. So, even if they go past the house, please call eight-four-five-four-four-six-four-nine-one-one. They'll at least get it in the blotter and we'll let the, we'll let the, uh, officers who are on the shifts know what's going on. Because we have one or two, uh, or at least two, uh, on the shift, and it's tough for them to be everywhere at one time.
Even if we don't get the car right there, if you just get a description, we can look for-
Well, usually I just hear it over the TV in my house. I'm not looking at the car.
Call. I would say call.
I hear it from inside.
Don't, I, I, I appreciate that, that answer from the police officer, uh, in regards to the, into the description. But like you said, I don't get up. You just call. But if you call, chances are they're not just going by your house and turning the music down. They're probably keeping on going. So, call and, and report it. That's what I would suggest you do. I had, uh, Mr. Polito, letter. Okay, so I tried to get, take your notes and it's okay, because you guys started talking and that's fine. There's no official letter from the town, uh, from the village to the district attorney. I'm just answering these. If it's not right, I apologize. There was no letter from the tech, from the village board to the district attorney. There was no call from the village board to the district attorney. I am not aware of any call from the police department requesting a, an official complaint from the police department to the district attorney's office. Um, so I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I will ask as best I can some of the questions we asked tonight.
I have some Mr. Donofeu say, is he, at least I'm-
Okay, I'm not, I can't do third party, right? So, Mr. Donofeu is not here tonight. If he comes at the next meeting, I would feel funny answering him at that point. But I'm just telling you what I know, okay? Okay, taxes.
Take a pride.
Lie, oh, no, I'm, I'm very good at it. Thank you. I appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Feel a little bit, feel a bit-
Fantastic, Mr. Joyce. So, a comment that was made by, uh, Mr. Joyce, uh, that we, we lied. So, I guess that's a name-calling, like a liar.
Uh, no, 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 I, I, I said, "You lied."
Me?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, I find it remarkable that, uh, I lied in the sense of, no one ever said that we weren't planning on, we hoped, the words I used, I believe, were we hoped we didn't have to go over the tax cap. This is not a debate. This is not a debate, sir. I gave you more than ample time tonight.
Go next week.
Oh, yeah, next week you can lay into me, okay? Nobody said that we, we said we hoped we didn't have to go over the tax cap, as in the town did too, which the town did go over the tax cap, okay? Why did they go over the tax cap? Not because operations, not that I'm aware of, because they took on more borrowing. What was their response for the reason for more borrowing? Because of the flood. Now, when we do it up here, obviously, it's a lack of any type of financial management. Actually, obviously, it's not, there is nothing going on right up here. It's because we raised five percent. Hold on a second. These are your comments, not mine. You can laugh it up all you want, too. I love that. I love when you guys laugh. No, the, the people in the audience, which is fine. I'm trying to give the best answers I can. I, I know you might not like it. I might do not like it. I might, you might not like it. So, so my point is, yeah, it's my, my point is, is that we did have an increase in taxes. Nobody denied it up here at the board, okay? Nobody said that Ms. Carrera didn't have a crystal ball, and she said, "I think the easiest thing anybody could ever say is taxes are gonna go up." The only one, taxes that went down, is if you got your town and county bill in January, is the county taxation. County taxes went down. God bless them, because they're able to take in more sales tax. We, we did the best we could with the budget. At one point, it was double-digit increases. And we got it down. And we got it down, and we got it down. I was told at some meetings that I was manipulating the numbers. See, we're okay about throwing names around, as long as it's not, you're not getting. You can throw all the names around, around you want and play the victim. I don't, I don't appreciate that. I don't appreciate that. People like to play the victim, but they also make nasty comments, or they also call names, which I'm not gonna get into. Ms. Carrera, please, I, I didn't interrupt you at all tonight.
I'm sorry, but you're not, you're not-
I didn't interrupt you at all, Ms. Carrera. Please, 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 please.
You have to talk to this guy.
Please. It's okay if, if we play the victim and then we can throw out any name in the book we want. Call people liars, call people manipulative, make people, make fun of people's weight. We could say that. It's not a problem. We could break your finger if you don't get it out of my face. I mean, the, it, it, listen, nobody denies that it gets crazy up here, which is why we try to get to a more respective atmosphere, which I think we've, we've been doing pretty good tonight so far, despite a few little mishaps. So, I understand your comment about taxes. I understand your comment about young and old. Um, the twelve thousand dollars a year thing, I appreciate that, but that's not the village tax, twelve, twelve thousand dollars. That might be for the entire community, depending on what your house is assessed for. Um, and again, I go back to, if there's any senior citizen having to make a choice between food, medicine, and taxes, please call Village Hall. Please, we wanna help you in any way we can, shape or form. Uh, and then real quick FEMA update, we are getting funds in from different projects. I'll, I'll make sure we get a list of you for the next meeting. And, uh, what was the last thing I think you mentioned, uh?
The resignation letter?
Um, I, I mentioned the resignation letter. We approved it, Mr. Leahy.
No, I, I stopped working.
And kudos to Kathy Jones, who just got elected. I did one little correction, and not to take away from what Ms. Jones is doing, because she just got elected president of the Senior Islanders Senior Club. Congratulations to you. And, yes, congratulations to you. She's doing a great job with coordinating and doing different events in here. And also, kudos to Jen Garjulo, who I know Ms. Jones will agree with me. She pretty much led that campaign and delivered, and I think it was fantastic. And I think she deserves a round of applause, too, to know she led it. I think that would be unusual to do.
Motion.
No, no, there are people who wanna talk.
We miss her about it.
Opposed? Motion, Karen. Thanks.